Thank you, Mr. President.
Elliot?
I don't have anything in my folder for police and fire. You guys, chief? Chief? Either chief? Either chief? No? Anyone on council have anything for the chiefs? Anyone in the audience? Jack, you want to say something to the chiefs?
No, I'm all set.
You're all good?
All good, thank you.
All right. I guess I will make a motion to adjourn at 6:01.
Martin's second.
Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Costanzo, yes.
Elliot, yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilman Elliot. We now go to public works with Council Pro temp Costanzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open the city's public works at 6:01 PM. Let the record show that both my members are here, Michael Morrow and Tom Snitzky. So I have three things in my folder. We will start with two that kind of correlate with each other. We're going to start with co-agreement with the City of Parma in order to submit an application for the Broadview Road resurfacing project. Director Bryde or Director Gerson, who would like to speak on this?
Thank you, I can speak if you'd like.
Yep.
So this is, so Broadview Road, we did receive funding from ODOT to resurface the road, however, it only pays for basically the, removing the surface course and replacing the surface course. Everything else is 100% city. So it's in its 50% in Parma, 50% Seven Hills. We worked with the City of Parma to make an application for OPWC, which is Ohio Public Works Commission. We're asking for funding in the amount of $3 million in a grant and $1 million in a low-interest loan. Of that total of 4 million, it would be split 50/50 between the cities. So the legislation you have is to basically have a cooperative agreement between City of Parma is the one piece of legislation, and the second is authorized in GPD, which is the design engineer for the project, to make application for this. We would receive notice most likely late January of 2026 if we received the funds, and then those funds would be available in next year around June or July. So if you have any questions, I could try to answer on any of those.
So we'll take them one by one, because I do know that they're, they kind of fit together, but we will take them. It looks like we'll need an emergency for a time?
Yes, if you can. We'd like to have that passed at the next council meeting so that we can have it turned back into OPWC to meet the requirements.
Okay, so we will take the first one. Do any of my committee members have questions on the first one? Council as a whole? Mayor, would you like to speak on anything?
I'd love to have this time, thank you.
Anybody in the audience? All right, I am going to move to put this on as a resolution, as an emergency for our next council meeting. Do I have a second?
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Morrow, yes.
Snitzky, yes.
Costanzo, yes. Okay, you kind of led into this with the funding assistance for Broadview Road, the resurfacing. Is there anything else you want to talk about on there? Kind of add into it, so.
No, that's pretty, I pretty much summed it up, opened to questions. Again, it's a, it's a joint agreement between City of Parma, City of Seven Hills, and so you get some points, some more points for the application if you have a joint project with other cities, and seeing as this project is basically 50% in Parma, 50% in Seven Hills, it makes sense to make a joint application between the two cities.
Okay, we're going to do an emergency with this one as well, too?
Yes, if you could, please.
Committee members, anything to add? Council as a whole? Anybody in the audience? Guys, we're going to.
I got one question when you get to the last one.
Okay, that's okay.
Get to the very end, so, okay. Go ahead.
Settle down over there.
All right.
We're going to put this resolution on for our next meeting as an emergency. Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Roll call.
Snitzky, yes.
Morrow, yes.
Costanzo, yes. Okay, the last thing in my folder is regarding Rockside Road. It's entering into a co-op agreement with Cuyahoga County to participate in the concrete road repair of Rockside Road. Cities of Seven Hills' total project cost is $58,500. Director Gerson, you're up again.
Yeah, yeah, so this is a project that was brought to me by the county. City of Independence is looking to do concrete repairs from, on Rockside Road, essentially from Brexville Road to the, to our Easterly Corporation Line. We do have a portion that is concrete in Seven Hills, approximately 700 feet. They asked if we wanted to participate in that. I originally talked with Eric Mack of the county. I said, I talked to the mayor a little bit, I said, "Yeah, I thought it would be a good idea, I'd like to hear it." They did send out legislation they wanted us to approve, which is what's on your agenda today. I did talk to Eric Mack, and one of the concerns I had is that we didn't want to get into paying for a lot of the design and work that went into just for another city, so we want to make sure we had skin in the game and make sure we had benefit from that. So what you have before you is the agreement between the county and the, and the city, and talking with Eric Mack, he's estimating that the design fee that we would be responsible for is approximately $9,000. That's to develop the plans, both in the City of Seven Hills and Independence. Independence would pay a larger share of that. Then we'd be responsible for a portion of the inspection fee for when they're putting it in, and then we would be responsible for any of the construction that's done in the City of Seven Hills. For a total of $58,500 would be, should be about the number we should be expected to pay if all the work that is proposed to be done is done. Just for a rough idea, what I did is I looked at and I said, if we just took that 700 lineal feet, which is basically from, you know, just past Lombardo, which is concrete, and we had to repair 10% of that based on road costs that we've had in the past, we'd probably spend upwards of $100,000 to do that same work. So, you know, we're saving about $40,000 for the same amount of work. It's not a real big priority, but this is a project that you can see the joints failing, and I think it would be something that would be helpful for the residents of the city and commuters that come through Rockside Road. So I'll try to answer any more questions if you have.
No, that's great info. We're looking for an emergency, again, timeliness?
Yes, if you could. It's been on our desk a little bit, just trying to understand the cost and everything, and county's been helpful in understanding those. So after I had that conversation, I wanted to bring it to council, I want to get it approved as soon as possible.
Committee members, any questions?
Are you done?
I just asked committee members here on my committee.
Last one?
Yes, that is.
Okay. I have one question about Broadview Road. Mr. Mayor, maybe you want to be in on this. You said that the, it was resurfacing the road, I meant, you mentioned that. Are we going to get any kind of depth repair out of it? I don't know if the extra money was for that or what.
Yeah, so if I could, if I can answer that. Yeah, so, so the Broadview Road project, the state only pays for the resurfacing, so they pay to take off three inches of asphalt and they pay to put three inches back on. What it doesn't pay for, which becomes your responsibility, 100% your responsibility, is any of the base repairs that need done, any curb repairs, any handicap ramp repairs, catch basin repairs, and so a bulk of that money becomes your responsibility. And so, yes, we would do base repairs, we would do curb repairs, we would do driveway repairs as needed. A lot of the ADA handicap ramps, although if you go out there and they look fairly well, as you know, ADA changes the rules a lot, and there's a lot of tolerances on there, so a lot of the handicap ramps would need to be replaced so that they're up to date and up to code as part of that project. And those are all requirements of the project, and they're 100% your responsibility. That's why we went for OPWC funding to help us with this important project and try to offset some of those costs. So, yes, I hope that answers your question.
All right. But this is not, it's not a full-depth repair, though?
Correct. It is not a full-depth repair, but again, what we would do is we would mill off the three inches, and I may say we, we being Seven Hills, City of Parma, it would be run by ODOT, and then we would go out there and help in assisting in where those repairs need to be done. Obviously, there's a, you're not repairing all, all the whole road, but areas where the joints are failing, you'd want to repair those joints, similar to what we do on a road program within the city, but on a much larger scale.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from councils as a whole? Anybody out there? Go ahead and say your name.
Jack Thrain, 6264 Crossview Road. My question is, is three inches, is that normal for the total amount of asphalt on that road? Three inches?
If I can.
Yes.
Yeah, so typically, roads vary, but they either have a concrete base, which Broadview Road has much of a concrete base, and I believe it has seven to 10 inches of concrete, and then it's overlained by an intermediate, typically one and a half inches and one and a half inches of surface course. What we did have GPD do as part of their design is we had them do pavement course so that we understand generally, generally relative how much asphalt is on there, but most concrete roads that are overlaying typically have three inches, but sometimes there are ones that have a little less, sometimes a little more, but generally three inches about what you put on.
That was my question, because I know when I did a driveway years ago, I put two inches of asphalt in my driveway, and all those semis and traffic on Broadview Road, but you say that's the way it is.
Yeah, what I would say is we do have some history. We know that at the intersection of Pleasant Valley and Broadview Road, just south side of, we did a repair, what, earlier last year, earlier this year, where you saw the pavement rolling.
Yeah, those trucks just eat that up.
Yeah, so what we do is typically that's a base failure, that's indicative of that, so we would do the, take the asphalt off, and then we're walking the street, looking at the street, looking at the damage, and if there's areas that are damaged underneath that base that you need to repair, that's what Mr. Snitzky was talking about, how we'd repair that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Committee Chair? Councilman Martin?
Engineer, is, is it four inches being rolled to three, or three inches being rolled to two?
Generally speaking, you're going to have a total one and a half inch total on each course, so generally, you're going to be probably one and three quarters as you lay it down, and then you're rolling it thinner, so I would say, in that end, I would say you're putting down four inches, rolling it to three. So the total thickness when you're done would be three, or like I say, it would be one and a half intermediate, one and a half of surface. We may opt to look at a one and three quarter of intermediate, one and a quarter of surface, but the total would be generally three inches of asphalt when we're done.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to make it very clear that this is a state route, 176, that ODOT determined the fundage, and secondly, I want to make clear that Parma is the lead on the project, determining what needs to be done with the road. I don't want to set any unrealistic expectation, so I want to ask the engineer, of the money we're going for the grant for today, right? Which is, thank you for doing that work, because we don't ever leave a stone unturned in trying to find money for projects. Can you ballpark, and if I'm asking an unfair question, don't answer it, of the money that we're going for the grant, what portion of that money would be the handicap ramps, the curbs, catch basin type work?
Generally speaking, we're not done with the plans, GPD's not done with the plans, but I would say 100% of that money would go to that work, Mayor.
Right. If 100% of the money that we're going for the grant for, any base repairs that may came up will require additional funds.
Yeah, yeah, so essentially, you're going to have the money that came from ODOT, which is about $1,750,000, rough numbers. That money is in, and that only covers certain items, which would be surf, resurfacing, taking the asphalt off. Everything else is city responsibility, 100%, and so what we're trying to do with this grant is we're trying to offset the monies that the city would have to pay, and so those monies would go to either curb repair, base repair, handicap ramp, it also can pay for engineering and construction administration that you also have to pay. So we're trying to lump it all together, but I will say that if the project is over the three, the four million that you, you're asking for, plus the money you have from ODOT, you are still responsible for the difference, and we've, we've accounted for some of that money, and we've talked with the finance director on being able to have that money available, so we're trying to offset what the city.
I just think the water's got a little muddy here today, and I wanted to make it clear, the state funded the three-inch resurfacing, we know that in the best interests of the taxpayers and of the City of Seven Hills, that now is the time to do any curb, catch basin work, handicap ramps, et cetera, and that is a big number, and we're going for a grant for that money.
Yes, sir.
But if, once you peel all those layers off, the base repairs that were talked about by a member of council, you, potentially, if that is the case, determined by the engineering firm that the City of Parma selected.
Yes.
Potentially, you might have to come back for those base repairs that are being talked about, and.
Yeah, so in the estimate that we're, we've put together, we've worked with the GPD putting that together, we've had some accounting for base repairs in there. What we all don't know is how much base repair, but it's a, it's a somewhat educated guess.
Dan, this is what I was trying to ascertain, is in the estimate, how much, what portion? You said there's some base repairs, but originally, I thought it was basically no.
Yeah, I don't recall exactly how much we had in the estimate, I could look back and get that back to you, but I know we did have some, when I say we collectively have some monies in there for that. The base repair is one of those kind of unknown items, you kind of look at the road and kind of make a determination, educated guess, if you will, but we do have some monies in there, we just don't know if we have enough monies in there for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to get a little bit back on track, we're still talking about Rockside Road. Does anybody have any questions with the Rockside Road project? Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion to put this, this ordinance on the agenda as emergency for our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Morrow, yes.
Snitzky, yes.
Costanzo, yes. Director Bryde, Director Gerson, any new business coming up? Anything you want to talk about? No?
I have nothing for tonight.
Okay. Do any of my committee members have any new business?
No, sir.
I'm going to look to close the city's public works at 6:17 PM. Do I have a second?
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Morrow, yes.
Snitzky, yes.
Costanzo, yes.
We now, we now go to Community Service of Councilperson Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll open our meeting at 6:17 PM. I have nothing in my folder this evening. We have Director Tony Terry here, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Hi, good evening. I just want to update you on a couple of things that we have going on, one of which is October 4th, from 1 until 5 o'clock, we are having our Fall Festival located right here at the grounds of Seven Hills City Hall, and then we have begun the process for our children's Christmas party, as well as the Yuletide and Adopt a Family programs. So of course, if you'd like to participate in any way, please let me know.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
What were the hours on the October?
1 until 5 on October 4th.
Council Chair? When would the Adopt a Family, when will that, all that info come out? When do you foresee?
I foresee that, I submitted that for the upcoming newsletter, so that information will be out upon receive, upon receipt of that newsletter.
Any further comments from committee members or other members of council for the director? Anyone from the audience for Director Terry? I have nothing further this evening. If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:18 PM.
Costanzo, second.
Roll call, please.
Costanzo, yes.
Curie Azus, yes.
Kelly, yes.
Thank you, have a good evening.
We're now going to go to finance, we're going to open finance at 6:18 PM, and the first thing I have in my folder is a moral claim, which everybody has received, so I'm going to read the findings now. "After findings reviewed by our moral claims committee, we believe this moral claim should not be considered due to lack of evidence, according to the service director Jeff Bryde. No service director employees working on the driveway to the service garage on, on that Monday see attached report with daily worksheet, service, daily worksheets from the service department. Under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 2744, municipalities generally have sovereign immunity from liability for damages caused by road conditions. However, there are exceptions, if the municipality knew or should have known about the hazardous condition like a pothole and failed to take reasonable steps to fix it in a timely manner, they may be held liable. Proof of negligence to successfully claim reimbursement of driver typically must prove the municipality had noticed a road hazard, the municipality had reasonable opportunity to repair it, and the damage was directly caused by the hazard." Mr. Swajal, do you have anything to say?
Sure. Yes, John Swagelak. I only submitted the moral claim form because I initially called Panera, and they said it was nothing to do with their restaurant. They, they directed me that they thought it was a Seven Hills crew working in front of their restaurant. So if you guys can confirm it's not anything related to Seven Hills, I guess we're done here.
Yeah, we have the time sheets here from that day. Does anybody have any questions on the finance committee for Mr. Swajalak?
Swagelak.
Swajalak, say that again?
Try to forget, try to forget the Z, Swagelak.
Swajalak.
I have none.
Thank you.
I have nothing. So we're going to take a vote on this to yes or no, to pay this moral claim. Roll call. Councilman Martin?
Uh, no.
Councilman Morrow?
No.
Councilman Curie Azus, no. Moral claim denied.
That was the friendliest moral claim. Mr. President?
Yes.
What, what, the support, I mean, just for the record, I want to be clear.
Yes.
The day of the incident, Mr. Swagelak reported, the city checked records, and no one was, no one worked that day, we didn't have anyone working.
Not on that.
And I just didn't think it was clear for anyone at home, or if John checks in later, I wanted, the day of his incident, no Seven Hills Service Department employee worked that day?
No, I have the time sheets right here, and I talked to Director Bryde, and nobody was working on that driveway that day or near there. Director Bryde, you want to say anything?
I mean, that's, I just want, I think I want to make it clear. We've cap, we've encapsulated it at this point, correct?
Yeah, I mean, well, you said.
I didn't know if it was completely clear a minute ago, I wanted, for the meeting minutes and everything, to clearly note that no one worked that day. That's it, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, I'm now going to move to go into executive session for pending litigation and employee compensation. Do I have a second?
Martin, second.
Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Curie Azus, yes.
Yep.
Like I told you, see you around. I know. It's like calling it out. It's like calling it out.
Okay, we return from executive session at 7:16 PM and we're going to continue with finance. I have a couple of things in my folder.
Mr. President, before we get started.
Yes, yeah.
I thank you for acknowledging me. I want to just state for the record, I partially misspoke when we were talking about that moral claim. I said no one was working that day from our service department when in reality, no one was working in that part of the city. Everybody was working on home days cleanup at the time of the ledge incident. So I accidentally misspoke. We didn't have any personnel in the area of the incident that was subject to the moral claim, but we did have people working that day. Thank you for allowing me to correct the record, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing I have in my folder is the legislation for the concrete repair on Rockside Road for 58,500, which already went through Public Works. Any other questions on this? Can I move to put this on the agenda for our next meeting as an emergency? Do I have a second?
Martin's second.
Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Mar, yes.
Curiousus, yes. The next thing I have is an ordinance that I'm going to add to the agenda tonight and waive the 24-hour rule. It's an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills with Worldwide LLC and William D. Mason in declaring emergency. Anybody have any questions on this? I'm going to move to put this on the agenda tonight as an emergency and waive the 24-hour rule. Do I have a second?
Mar, second.
Roll call.
Mar, yes.
Martin, yes.
Curiousus, yes. I also have Caga County Public Health Agreement for 2026 and 2027. Must be approved and returned to the county by the end of this year. It's a two-year public health services agreement between Seven Hills and Caga County Board of Health. It's $105,011 for 2026 and $117,669 for 2027. The Ohio第一章3709 of the Ohio revised coach stipulates that each city in the state of Ohio must provide health services either through a city health district or by a valid contract or union with the county health district or an adjacent city district. Any questions on this?
I'm none.
I'm going to move to put this on the agenda for the next meeting as an emergency. Do I have a second?
Martin's second.
Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Mar, yes.
Curiousus, yes. And the last thing I have is annual council raises.
Compensation.
Compensation, I should say. The new compensation would be city council members would receive $12,000, council pro temp would receive $14,000, and the council president would receive $16,000. Council annual increments equate to the annual percent increase of PERS.
Council president, may I add a friendly amendment to that is that the pro temp relationship between councils never less than 17% and the relationship between council president and council is never less than 25%.
Thank you, Councilman Martin, for clarifying that. Any questions on this? Anybody on council? Anybody in the audience? Okay, I'm going to move to put this on the agenda for a first reading at our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Mar, second.
Roll call.
Mar, yes.
Martin, yes.
Curiousus, yes. I believe that's all I have this evening. Does anybody have anything else for finance? Hearing none. I'm going to move to adjourn at 7:20 PM. Do I have a second?
Martin's second.
Roll call.
Martin, yes.
Mar, yes.
Curiousus, yes. We'll start a meeting momentarily.